I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Actually, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance first, if you'd all like to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aha!
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have two, August 15th and August 22nd. With approval? Okay, motion by Marlin to approve, seconded by Brown. Is that correct? Or did you have a question?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
On page five, item L, has Marlin recused? I'm not sure if she recused herself from that vote. I think that was, uh, Madigan recused.
Thank you for catching that.
Page five.
That was Madigan recused, yes.
Madam Clerk? We'll get that changed, okay? Thank you. All right, so I assume you want to have that be included in your motion? With the approval of the Maker of...
Yes, as amended, as corrected.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see any additions. Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. I have two people who want to say something to the Urbana City Council. And if anyone else wants to say something, we have little yellow slips of paper at the back, on the table, right by the door, so fill one out and we'll listen to what you have to say. Keith Haza?
Yes.
Okay. Just have a seat there and speak into the microphone.
Well, I could speak when it's brought up. Are we ready to discuss the ordinance for the Family Video? Are we ready to discuss that?
You can speak right now if you want. I assume you're in favor of it?
Yes, I am.
If anybody has a question, they can ask you.
Okay.
Do you want to say something first? Go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the regional manager for Family Video. And we've been over on Philo Road for, I think since about 2004. And Family Video is a privately owned company. We operate, I think, about 768 video stores right now in 18 states, and I think a couple in Canada. And about four years ago, we started franchising Marcos Pizza, which is a carryout delivery pizza. And our, and so far, we've done this in about 130 of our stores. And we put a demising wall up, and we have a carryout window in the video store. And the concept is pizza in a movie. And you can get online, you can order, you can say, "I want this movie and this pie," and we'll send somebody over and they'll deliver to your house or pick up movies. And so it will help us, obviously, with the new business, the pizza business. But it also, it's really added a different dimension to a mature business, which is the video rental business. So it kind of helps that business as well. So, again, I'll be able to, you know, answer any questions about the actual variance when it's called.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, who do not wish to speak but want their position about their concern on that Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And also, Elderess Melinda Clark does not wish to speak but wants to... Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't read it right. Melinda Carr. Sorry about that. She wants to register her concerns about the sewer issues in Dr. Ellis subdivision and the historic impact. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council? Okay, we'll move on. I have a proclamation. Whereas monarch butterflies have been migrating for thousands of years from as far north as Canada to as far south as Mexico, and whereas these distinctive butterflies fly through Illinois in perhaps the most spectacular migration in the insect world, and whereas due to loss of habitat and use of pesticides, the population of monarch butterflies has fallen by 90% in recent years, and whereas this drastic reduction is a reminder of the need to protect the balance in nature, and whereas the National Wildlife Federation has launched an effort to protect the monarch butterfly by restoring habitat in urban areas, and whereas the National Wildlife Federation has enlisted American mayors to commit to this effort by signing the mayor's monarch pledge to take specific action, and whereas Urbana is taking action in a number of ways to restore milkweed plants required by monarch larvae and native nectar-bearing plants to nourish adult monarchs, and whereas there is great community interest in educating children and adults about restoring habitat for these lovely butterfly visitors. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September as Monarch Butterfly Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and urge all citizens to plant milkweed and native nectar-bearing plants to sustain the monarch butterfly. So we have a whole list of things that we've been doing. Scott Test and Public Works, and so anyway, if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Mayor?
Yes, Charlie?
The Park District is also involved in similar efforts.
Right, and the library has a butterfly garden, too.
I will comment that this year, in all of my bike riding and even, and sitting in my backyard, I've seen all of two monarchs. It's very sad.
I have seen a bunch in my yard, because I've planted the plants. Okay. Is there any unfinished business that we're going to need to do tonight? I don't think so. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole? Is that, who was that? Mike Madigan?
I think I'm the one. So the committee of the whole, uh, reported Resolution Number 2016-08-053R. Resolution approving an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing with Houston Galveston Area Council. Reported that to the council, recommendation for approval, and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Roberts. Any questions? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? That motion carries.
Ordinance Number 2016-08-073, an ordinance approving a right-of-way license agreement with Windstream KDL LLC. Was recommended to the city council for approval, and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? That motion carries.
Ordinance Number 2016-08-074, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2016-17, which were rebudgets and technical corrections, was recommended to the city council for approval, and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Was that by Brown?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Brown. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The other agenda items I must recuse myself from, and Diane Marlin chaired the committee for these.
Thank you. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance Number 2016-08-076. It's an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class BB liquor licenses for Pizza M 208 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance Number 2016-08-077, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for A+ Restaurant and Entertainment LLC, doing business as A+ VIP Lounge, 214 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Anyone want to make a report? Okay. Okay, Libby Tyler, Community Development.
Just a reminder that Habitat for Humanity has a group celebration, community commitment, and this is an interfaith build ceremonial kickoff this Sunday coming up, September 11th, 3:00 PM, and the address is 1212 Hill Street in Urbana.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to new business, we have ordinance Number 2016-09-079, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow an encroachment of air conditioning units into a required front yard in the city's B3 General Business District at 1901 South Philo Road.
Thank you very much. So the case Mr. Haza spoke about earlier is this one, and it is a variance for the building at Colorado and Philo Road, here shown in yellow. I apologize, Alderman Ammons, if you cannot see this. But, in essence, this building here has the Family Video, of course, and then there's a space on the south which is designed, a gaming hall is going in there. But the idea is to convert some of that northern space into that Marcos Pizza. So that will necessitate additional air conditioner units. As you can see, this building is really close to their setback lines along most of their frontages here. So what the applicant has done is looked at where you could possibly put air conditioner units. I'm going to walk you through those briefly. Here's a site plan with a little bit of a blow-up. So in order not to need a variance, one could put the AC units along the front, which would be in this location, not a good location for air conditioner units, right near the front door of the store. It would also block the sidewalk, potentially impact these parking spaces. One could put the air conditioner units behind the building. However, the result of that would be, this is a picture of the back of the building, it would go into the service drive and also would be placed over utility use, so it might not even be permitted. The roof would be possible if it was a flat roof, but this is a pitched roof, so that is not a feasible option. So really, the only option is the one that is being requested here, and that's along the north side of the building. It does require a variance. The setback, required setback here is 15 feet. The building is about 15 feet, three inches setback from the property line, so anything they had put here would require a variance. We do think this is the best option. ZBA, when they had the public hearing on this item, unanimously recommended approval, finding that all of the variance criteria were met. There are two conditions that are proposed here. Basically, that they would be placed in this location and that they would be screened with a fence, which is shown, some of the illustrations that were provided by the applicant, a nice screening fence here. You can also see that there is some existing landscaping that would also help with the screening. So the ZBA did recommend approval, and the staff would concur with that recommendation. And Mr. Haza would be here to answer any questions, should you have them?
Okay, any questions?
Move approval, second.
Okay, motion by Madigan to approve, seconded by Smythe. Any other discussion? Diane?
I just want to say, I think this is a good solution to the problem, and does the motion need to include the language about the screening?
Those are listed in the ordinance already, so approval of the ordinance would capture that.
And I just wanted to note, Family Video has always had really excellent landscaping, and in fact, several years ago, SUNA gave them an award for the landscaping around their business, so I think they'll continue to do that.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons? Did he leave?
Aaron?
Guess not. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there's Aaron. Okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, next is Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Kelly Murkowski?
Good evening. Yes, before you is our two resolutions, approving ESG program subrecipient agreements, one with Crisis Nursery, and the other one with Rosecrans Champagne, Urbana. From the memo, you can see the objective is to provide funds to emergency and transitional housing facilities for homeless families and individuals. Both Crisis Nursery and Rosecrans are receiving funds for operational costs through this program. In May, the application was submitted to DHS with the state. July 5th, we executed the agreement with DHS, and then, as a result, we are required to have subrecipient agreements. And at its August 23rd meeting, the Community Development Commission forwarded the resolutions with a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay, any questions for Kelly? Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yeah. I move to approve Resolution Number 2016-09-054R, Resolution approving an emergency solutions grant program subrecipient agreement with Crisis Nursery for the next year, physical year 2016, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And there's Aaron.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we have Resolution Number 2016-09-055R, and this is to provide the grant to Rosecrans. Is there a motion?
I'll do it again.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, I wonder if, I don't know if, oh, sorry. I don't know if Kelly or Sheila would be, or either one would have the answer, but it seems like our HUD grant was cut basically in half because what we, what we had applied for wasn't permanent supportive housing, and they shifted their priorities to that.
Yes.
But they signaled, I guess, some time ago that they were going to do that. Did we just not get notice that this was the year it was going to happen, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, because in the past, they always funded everything. They funded all of the agencies. And then, starting, yeah, with last year, it's like, now you have to prioritize according to what our priorities are, and not everybody's going to get funded.
Did they, did they fund other, other cities that had permanent supportive housing projects that they applied for the money for? Is the same, was the total amount the same, and they just reduced ours so that they could support the priorities in other cities that had applied for the right category?
I'm not sure what the, every year, the amount is different that's available, but...
I guess, that's not as important as going forward, I guess. What programs do we have in place that would be considered permanent supportive housing? Or what programs are out there in the community? And is the strategy to, to highlight those next year when we apply, so that?
We're actually in the process of applying right now.
Okay.
And most of the programs are permanent supportive housing. I think there's one that might be transitional housing. But in addition to looking at what HUD's priorities, we also have to look at what local priorities are. So it might not be that the transitional housing is like at the bottom and they won't get funded. It could be based on the populations that are being served. It's, so in addition to what HUD priorities are, we also have to look at local priorities. But according to this application, I believe, they're saying that maybe like $50,000 may not get funded out of the total amount. Like 93% will get funded, and there may be 7% that's not. So, I know that the continuum and the executive committee is, and the continuum as a whole is trying to look at what are the priorities in the community, so that whatever the needs are, that they are being addressed. And so we are trying to work on that, and we'll hopefully, before the next application next year, we'll have a better idea.
Can you just name, is there a name you can throw out of an example of permanent supportive housing that might ring a bell with me?
Shelter Plus Care. Well, that was actually a program that we had years ago that Regional Planning Commission now runs, which is vouchers for agencies that deal with specific disabilities. So that's considered like permanent. There are also a couple of programs that are absolutely HUD-required that are like number one and two on our list, which is centralized intake. You're supposed to have that in order to work with the programs. And then, there's a management, homeless management information system that you have to have as well. So, in fact, last year, one of the continuums in the country, they put the HMIS, thinking that HUD's not going to not fund it, and we're going to put it at the very bottom. And even though it was a mandate by HUD, HUD still cut it. So, every, anything at the bottom could go. But those two things are absolutely required, and then, yeah, like I said, we're looking at what are priorities in the community.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, so we are at Roberts and Smythe. Is that the motion? Or did we have another one? Okay, so let's have a vote on that. If there are no more questions, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, we have supportive housing program, Resolution Number 2016-09-056R, a resolution approving a supportive housing program subrecipient agreement with Courage Connection.
Yes, this is also through the continuum to HUD, and this was one that was actually got cut. And you can see in the memo, it showed, there was like over 53% cut. So what they're going to do is, moving forward, they're going to reallocate their funds to just the domestic violence portion of their programs, because that is, one is considered a special population by HUD. So, but this agreement, it's, this is a grant that we've actually administered for over 20 years, and so in part, because of the changes within their funding and allocation, we are hopefully looking to turn this back to them to administer for themselves. But in the meantime, until we get HUD approval, we're moving forward as if we may be administering them. So that's, this agreement is required for that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Diane?
I was just going to move.
Okay. Any other questions? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? That motion carries. Next, we have Highland Green. The first resolution is 2016-09-57R, a resolution approving a subordination agreement between and among JP Morgan Chase Bank, NA, the City of Urbana, and Highland Green LLC.
And I'll present over all three of them, the next three. So these resolutions refer to documents that are very similar to the ones that have been brought before council over the past few weeks. They're just necessary for the real estate closing to proceed with the Highland Green development. The first two resolutions here refer to subordination agreements, and those are often necessary in real estate agreements with many different lenders. There needs to be an order established in terms of the financing and who takes what position. And in this case, the first one, the first subordination agreement, subordinates the city's contribution of $500,000 of home and CDBG funding to a $4.95 million loan by JP Morgan Chase Bank, used for the construction of the development. The second document subordinates our contribution to a $925,000 permanent loan offered by the Illinois Facilities Fund, IFF, which is a very well-renowned community development financial institution based out of Chicago. Subordination agreements as a whole, in the unlikely, very unlikely event of a foreclosure, it does put some of the city's funds at more of a risk, but they are absolutely necessary for these kinds of high-capital, high-cost real estate agreements. The third document is a consent agreement, consent to licensing agreement between the City of Urbana and Crystal View Townhomes. And this agreement would allow the management at Highland Green to use the facilities and offices at Crystal View Townhomes, rather than building new ones, which cuts down costs in the development. So that would definitely help out both parties. It's shared, it's the same ownership between Crystal View Townhomes and Highland Green, so it just formalizes the partnership there. The Community Development Commission voted unanimously to approve all three resolutions, and the city council can move to approve the documents, approve with suggested changes, or deny the documents. Are there any questions?
Okay. Are there any, is there a motion? Diane?
Move approval of Resolution Number 2016-09-057R, which is a resolution approving a subordination agreement between and among JP Morgan Chase Bank, the City of Urbana, and Highland Green LLC.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. We have Resolution Number 2016-09-058R. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Finally, we have Resolution Number 2016-09-059R, and this is the licensing agreement between the City of Urbana and Crystal View Townhomes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, next, we have mayoral appointments to boards and commissions. I'm recommending that we appoint Regina Parnell to the Champagne County Housing Authority Board to represent the City of Urbana for a term to expire July 31st, 2021.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Diane?
I just wanted to thank Janice Mitchell for her service on this commission, and Ms. Parnell is taking her place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would the clerk please-
I would like to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Aaron.
I too would like to thank Janice for her service on the board, and I look forward to Regina, who was a hardworking person. I've known her to be quite thorough, and so I'm looking forward to what she would do to represent and how she would represent the City of Urbana. Thank you, Regina.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It was unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, now, I'll move to reappointments to boards and commissions. I have Community Development Commission, Jerry Morland, and the Fireman's Pension Board. I think that should be called Firefighters Pension Board, but we'll deal with that later. Elizabeth Hannan. Is there a motion on those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.